My name is Gina Matthews and I live at 18 Oakwood Circle.
Oh, welcome. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Excellent.
I just wanted to thank the board and the superintendent's office. I appreciate the rescinding of the vote and I appreciate that you are considering a hybrid. And thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm going to take a first caller. Miss, oh, I guess I remuted off. I apologize. R. Canty on Zoom.
Hi, it's actually Amy Canty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome.
Right, I'm under Rob too. And then I had to put the kids to bed and so whatever.
Your first time caller?
Um, yes. So really, I just had a question about the survey for going to back to school. I heard that there was something due on the 10th and I couldn't find where that was. I rechecked my email. I didn't see it. So if there is something due, I know I didn't receive it and I also know that a few others have not. So if you're relying on that data for who is going to be online or who's not, it probably needs to be resent.
Mrs. Lijic?
I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. On page 12, where it describes choosing what's best for your family, it says, "Once a model is chosen by the district to be implemented, parents will be given the option to choose a model." I believe I said this at the forum and on Monday night. I know that I've answered parents who have emailed me that they would only receive the academic option form if we were going into a hybrid or if we were going into a fully back to school because there are remote options under those two.
Yeah, so really we should receive it either way.
So you wouldn't have received it if we were fully remote because that means everybody was fully remote and there's no choice. The only time an academic choice form was going to be given was when it was either a fully back to school and/or a hybrid.
Okay.
Okay, one other quick question that I wasn't clear on and maybe this needs to be considered or I missed it somehow. When you talked about students being fully online and having that team of teachers, let's say, because perhaps there wasn't enough online students per grade to have a teacher and then everybody else is doing hybrid. What happens when it goes fully remote to those kids that have one teacher but that teacher's teaching, you know, three grades? Is their teacher going to change? Because it sounded like when it goes fully remote, it'll basically be similar to a school day in a lot of ways with a lot of instruction from their teachers. But the online model had one teacher teaching multiple grades, which means less face-to-face time, if you will, you know, via Zoom or whatnot. So I just didn't understand how that worked for that switch. So if that could be explained, I would really appreciate that.
Yes, in a fully remote model, a student would be assigned to a single homeroom teacher at the elementary level. And certainly, you know, at the secondary level, they would have what would be more traditional, a teacher per course.
Right, but if you go hybrid, if the decision is hybrid and then your child has chosen online to start and then the whole district goes online, what happens to that group? Because you had mentioned perhaps the online kids who start the year online might have one teacher that teaches multiple grades. And it just sounds like there's a problem between those kids starting online with a teacher with multiple grades versus the kids that are hybrid and then go to online? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's possible that a student would transition to a new teacher.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Nathan Curtis, 33 Jawsland Road. I have two middle schoolers this year. I've actually already decided to keep them home and use the V-Lax program for them. I was actually pleasantly surprised at the board's decision earlier this week to keep all the students remote and I actually considered moving my students back into the regular Milford program. But I actually decided against it primarily because I value consistency specifically in the education realm. And the hybrid model, it fails dramatically in the realm of consistency. The fluidity of the program is, in fact, I think its worst aspect. There's nothing that you can count on for the students or the teachers. Expectations can't be met because you don't know what tomorrow is going to look like. And I don't think that's fair to either one of them or the administration of the school board. And worst of all, as noted in the last meeting, and this has been kind of walked back since, I recall it from last, from, what was it, Monday night? It's only really even expected to be the first four weeks that the hybrid model is even being used. Or at least that was the impression I was given. And I'm sorry if that was a mistake. But if that is, in fact, the case, or even just a possibility at this point, I don't see what the value is in getting those eight days over the course of an entire month. Those eight days of masked, socially distanced, unreasonably expensive and again, spread across an entire month, eight days. That's what we're getting out of the hybrid model. Two days a week isn't helping any of the working families in this room or out there in Zoom land. It's just not. Worst of all, it's not going to help the students. It's not going to help the students by bringing them in to see each other only to not see them again for five or six more days. It's not going to help them socialize because they're not going to be allowed to. The teachers aren't going to be able to socialize with them because they're going to be spending most of the time trying to keep the masks on them. We can't even get adults in market basket to keep their masks on. We're not going to be able to do that with school age children. It's just not going to work. Ultimately, I think what it comes down to, at least for me, until we can completely, consistently and safely return our students to the classroom, the remote learning model is the most efficient, most consistent model that we have available. The A/B model, while I really applaud all the work that everyone did to make it even a possibility, all of the contingencies that prop this up are the proof that you need to know that it's not going to work. If you need to go through this much explanation, how many parents are you going to have to give this same explanation to? How many teachers, students, are you going to have to say, well, this is how it's supposed to work? If it's that complicated, it's probably not going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to go to Zoom, Mrs. Stillwagon.
Hi, everybody. Thank you.
How are you?
So I had a question about, there's been no mention of Project Drive students. And will Project Drive be able to have their own nurse? Only because CDC and state guidelines are advising that nurses shouldn't be switching buildings due to contact tracing and all the other things.
Ask Mrs. Thibodeau to speak to that. Thank you.
So in the past, Project Drive has had access to the Nurse Satch Act. But we do have a new position called our District Wide Nurse, which we're hiring for. So that nurse could also be a resource for the students at Project Drive.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to remind everybody, because we do have, I do want to be respectful and I know the board does too, to get everybody here. Because we have, I'm going to cut off the, you know, no more on the Zoom thing. I'm going to take what's left here. But no one else, raise your hand. But please keep it brief to, you know, questions so we can get through it. But we do want to respect it, but we still want to get through it too, please. Thank you. Come forward. Thank you. How are you today?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, thank you.
And I do have a question, but it does need to be couched in a statement. And I think that I'd really like to say thank you to everybody because I'm so relieved that we are doing this tonight. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Katie, who's special ed. And as we've gone through this evening, I did prepare remarks. I'm going to keep it shorter. But as we went through this evening, I think there's still an impression that a month long to figure this out a little bit more is a good idea. And for our special ed population, that's devastating. We just came off a successful in-person summer return that my daughter thrived in. She's a second grader. Remote, I gave them kudos. They did the best they could. So I wasn't going to say, oh, this was awful. It was good. They did the great job. I did my best. My husband did his best. But remote doesn't work for Katie. And that's why we decided to go in person. And the in-person was wonderful. And then on Tuesday, we found out that, oh, well, we're going to gain more information and wait a little bit longer to make a decision. And that month long is even longer than what our even summer session was. So in my book, that means we go backwards. And that's terrifying as a mother of a special ed student. I think in terms of what I've heard tonight, I've heard a wide variety of questions. And as a PT, when I'm looking at questions in a valve, I'm looking at red flags. I'm looking at yellow flags, like red flags, like the ventilation systems. Those are things we absolutely need to know before we go to in-person instruction, whether it's the hybrid or that's what I'd look for. And the yellow flags, we want to flesh out the more detail. We want to be cautious and make sure we get these answers before we restart. But I would strongly advocate for a return and not a delay so that we restart this hybrid so that kids like my daughter don't regress backwards. Because I do think that at some point, we will end up needing to go remote. And we know that remote does not work for kids like my daughter. So please consider that. A month is not going to be an equitable delay. And that needs to be considered as we go toward a vote this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes?
I just want to make one comment. I meant to mention this earlier. But I think the special ed staff of this district need to be commended for the summer ESY program. I have received so many emails and feedback of their in-person program. It was outstanding, the messages I've received from teachers. I just want to lift up the special ed administration, the teachers who put on that program because it was a huge success. They followed all the safety protocols. Kids were learning. Kids were just loving being back. So I just want to say a big shout out to Ms. Thibodeau, her team, and all of the teachers that ran that program. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Yes. My name is Steve Frombley from North River Road, Milford.
Welcome.
And I'd like to thank everyone here for allowing us to have a chance to speak. And I have had a chance to take care with my wife, a six-year-old that went to Milford schools. And the results were incredible. Now he's in Nashua. And the results aren't so good because he's at home with his older sibling, unparented during the day because everybody has to work. So it's a trouble looking to happen, basically. So I'm pretty happy to hear that maybe Milford might have an option where they can go into school or do remote at home if they'd like to. And the issue is that, as I see it from my experience, is, first of all, they have to get out of an unparented situation because a lot of these kids that are left at home, parents have to work. And you think that they're going to be doing remote learning. That's not going to happen. They're going to be on their phone looking like this all day long and learning whatever's on the telephone. Second of all, and I haven't heard any of this mentioned tonight, is a lot of these kids are not eating properly. They're not getting the meal and a half that you provide in school, which is so important. And thirdly, they need the discipline that they might only get on the school bus, for example. Or coming in and lining up and you've got to behave and you're going to do it like this and you don't go touch the next person and so forth. And they're not learning this at home, especially at a young age. So those three things to me are real important. And from some of the comments that these kids made to me, the fourth thing is they're already learning on the phone, the laptop, the iPad, more things than I could even imagine when I was in school. And the opportunities are just incredible. So they'll learn no matter where they are, probably. But it's the continuous socialized thing that they need. And as far as remote goes, when I was in school, there was a young fellow that couldn't come to school because he was a hemophiliac and he had a little drive-in movie theater speaker in the classroom that we all carried around for him. And he graduated top of his class. So I think things have come a long way since then. But thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
That was 20 minutes. I just wanted to let you know that that was the 20 minutes we discussed earlier.
Okay, does the board want to make a motion to extend?
I'd like to make a motion to extend public comment.
Motion made by Mrs. Slappa.
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Carvel. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, just before we get to you. Ms. Hollander on Zoom. Ms. Hollander?
Can you hear me?
No, you sound like you're in a marble ball.
Okay, hold on one second. I'll take you off.
If you want to try calling back.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now. There you go.
Okay. Sorry, I had a Bluetooth on. So I'm a fifth grade teacher and I love teaching. And I greatly want to be back in the classroom. But there's a lot of fear, you know, going back into the classroom. And the fear is, you know, personally, we have a lot of underlying health conditions, high risk in my household. And I just don't know what the fair thing is to do. Like, how do you decide which teachers are remote? Which ones have to take a leave of absence? Which ones are going to get sick, possibly never to return? Like, it just is, there's just no safe way to do that. You know, I've been in Heron Pond for 13 years. We have air circulation issues all the time, you know. The bathrooms are an issue. Kids don't wash their hands. Parents, you know, sometimes send their kids to school sick and out of necessity or desperation in this time. Who's to say that they're, you know, even if they're asymptomatic and they don't have a fever, maybe they've been exposed. Maybe they're going to still send them to school, you know? I just don't know what the fair thing is for teachers. So I don't know if there's a plan in place to, like, match remote students to remote teachers. Or, you know, I just think that's something that I wanted to be on the task forces, but they were filled up before I could get a chance to be on them and ask those questions. But it's just, it's a great concern and weighs heavily on a lot of teachers. So.
Mrs. Seber, you can write to the, yeah. Thank you for going up. I appreciate it.
I can start the answer to that question. As we said on Monday, we are going to make every effort to accommodate staff who qualify for those accommodations. Those staff who qualify for accommodations and can teach remotely, our first step is to look at the students who have chosen remote learning and assign those teachers to those students if that is the accommodation that they qualify for under the law. Ms. Seber, would you like to add anything?
Sure, sure. This is Laura Seber, Human Resources. So I have received a number of concerned folks that are either struggling with health concerns or have childcare needs. And so what we're going to be looking at is, you know, do they qualify for a reasonable accommodation under ADA? Do they qualify for a qualifying reason under the Families First Coronavirus Act? And if they do, then we will certainly be working with those folks first and foremost to look at the remote teacher option as a reasonable accommodation. And if that position isn't available, either because there's no student need or we already have those positions filled based on the numbers, then we're going to be looking at other types and forms of reasonable accommodations that we can do to help them fulfill those essential functions of their jobs.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
And information's going out to our folks in the next day or so.
Okay, good. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, and while we're cleaning, we'll take our last Zoom question from Mrs. Devane.
Hi, my question's in regards to the AM/PM schedules for the elementary schools. It doesn't seem very practical for parents, two full parents, to work full-time outside of the household. So what are we supposed to do in situations where, say, we work in another town or city and our child is aligned to a PM class? We're supposed to travel back and forth to pick them up, move them to, you know, their childcare? Was that discussed any further? I know it was briefly discussed on Monday. And the concern was that children would be outside of the classroom for five days. Two of those days are the weekends, so those don't really count. So Wednesday is a win day. So was any more consideration put into an AA model, a win day, and then a BB for those two groups? It also seems more like there's going to be a higher risk of contamination when we have two sets of children attending the same day.
Hi, this is Tim O'Connell, principal at Jocks. And we did a lot of thinking about the different hybrid options for the elementary schools. And I'm going to speak on behalf of Mr. Saunders and myself. We did feel that the daily half-day model suited the needs of the students more. This is primarily because younger students, they do need regular routine and consistency to build momentum with their learning. That's so important at the young age to have that daily check-in for schools. I do feel that we did explore the double A and the AB model that is adopted by the middle and high school. We just felt that that was too much time between days where the students would be at school. And as a result, we felt that any momentum with their learning would be lost. So the half-day hybrid model is what is proposed for the elementary school. I know that we thought long and hard about parents that have the need for childcare. We did reach out to the Boys and Girls Club. They are working with us to offer some care in the off-half-day sessions. So they're restructuring their program to accommodate that. And I have not reached out to any other childcare facilities at this point, but I intend to do so when a decision, if a decision is made tonight. So.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. How are you?
Thank you for your time. My name is Mark Hager. I'm from Mason, New Hampshire. Obviously, New Hampshire. I want to thank Mr. Carvel for heading this up. And I want to thank the superintendents and all the administrators. My wife's an administrator and I know that you guys work countless hours. So thank you. Where we live in Mason, a hybrid or a remote type of schooling is not an option for us. We have no internet. There's no plans for internet to come down our street. We attempted to get through the spring by purchasing a dish through HughesNet at $250 a month. It allowed us access about 10% of the time. My daughter had to spend a lot of her classroom time in her car in a Dunkin' Donuts parking lot trying to access her schoolwork. So I appreciate us being recognized as a special so that if you go to a hybrid model, we can come back into school. Otherwise, my daughter and about 20 or 30 other students from Mason will be left behind. And I'm sure you guys are familiar with ESSA and you have a legal and moral obligation not to leave these children behind. The gentleman I think left, he had a good point. I do not think even a hybrid model is going to work. I think you need to go back face-to-face. The people that are scared can work remotely and let the others come to school. But unfortunately, if you do not open up the school, we don't have an option and we're left behind. And you have a legal and moral obligation not to let that happen. Thank you.
How are you today?
Hi, my name is Pamela Cook, sorry. Live on Ridgefield Drive in Milford. When it went remote, I do thank you for having this second meeting, by the way. But when we went remote, we still have, we had one that just graduated last, this past year. He had a rough go of the graduation, how it went. We still have two in the high school. I feel that it was a downfall, okay? Now we have, nobody got stay back. They should have, okay? I now have a senior this year who failed miserably last year. He should never have made it to a senior year. Now I'm concerned that he is not going to be in school. He is not going to pass senior year. Never mind who now we have a sophomore as well. Having it remote is going to be very devastating for them. When we told them how it was going to be, he already knew he's doomed, okay? I know Mason children, some don't have internet. What about the people in Milford that may not have internet? You can't forget, it's not just Mason. It's people that reside in Milford that don't have internet either. Or that are struggling and paying $200 and something, $300 to have access to everything they need. Some kids, if you went back and looked and saw how their grades were when they were in school and then when they went remotely, the ones that have failed and got all Fs should be in the building with a teacher, okay? Also, what are these teachers actually doing? I'm a par educator here. I had no access to any of the children. I was alone during this whole time doing webinars by myself. No human contact. But my kids, who really dislike me because I'm on their butt all the time, okay? But I see teachers out taking walks all day long down my neighborhood. Or I'm only so many hours a day, so by 12 o'clock, I'm allowed, I'm done my day. I'm in the grocery store and I'm seeing teachers that should be at home. My son and the one that just graduated, 9:00 at night getting an email, this is due the next morning. That's not appropriate. They send emails out to the teachers, never hear back for a day or so. Not appropriate. So at this point, they don't want to do anything. Every day, getting in, oh, marked absent, marked absent. I sent it in, I passed it in, I checked in. You're still being marked absent. So it really, you need to look at the kids that don't have internet access, Mason, Milford included, and the kids that actually failed, that should never have graduated to the next level, that need to be in there as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
That's okay. We're all excited.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Alex Lloyd. I live at 7 Birchwood Drive here in Milford. And I first want to, you know, just note how passionate all of you are, the board, the administrative staff, the school staff. You know, clearly otherwise you wouldn't be here for two hours on top of what you guys did Monday. For now, I'm here to be in support of the board's decision from Monday night to go to full remote learning. This is not to say that remote learning comes with no problems. What the woman who was just here expressed is valid. She has valid concerns. We need to make sure that we can support these people to be able to ensure that remote learning is successful. The safety of our children should be our top priority. It's my top priority in my day job and I will not slack on that front as a member of this community. Thank you for all you do.
Mr. Wilson?
Good evening. Thanks, Mike. For those who don't know, my name is David Wilson. I live up on 34 Wildflower Way. And it's my belief And it's my belief that anything is possible when people come together. We can put our energies, our resources together for a simple, common goal. I feel tonight, process has been made, progress, excuse me, has been made to that endeavor. Tonight, in this room, I get a sense of community. It's my goal that we look towards having a vote to reopening the schools and not going in a remote way, but trying to get our schools open, get our teachers and our students back into these schools in the best and safest way possible. I want to thank the principals of Mr. O'Connell, Mr. Saunders, Mr. Demers, Ms. Davis, for the work you've been doing, getting these, all your bases, all the buildings are covered. And Mr. Mr. Demers, well done, coming right into Milford. I think you're going to fill the space left by Mr. DiMarco quite well, and I hope you have a wonderful career here in Milford. To the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Thibodeau, Mr. Cooper. It's been a lot of work getting behind the motions and getting things in this district ready, whether we're going to open or not. Things can get tougher on here in Milford. It's been quite an undertaking. And I think the road ahead, I think we're going to be well positioned again if we vote to reopen the schools and get things back to work. You know, to the members of the board, I appreciate your roles. I'm thankful that this meeting was called. Although you can't please everyone, I think you did right by meeting again, you slowing down and listening. I think next time, maybe the best idea, as Ms. Talafa commented, take a break, reconvene, take a breather, vote again. Task now is for parents, teachers, and students to work under this architecture. If we happen to go back to school, it's going to take a lot of work from a lot of hands, for sure. Not everyone's going to get their way. I think it's reopening gets a sense of normalcy back for our kids. You know, as the Marines say, adapt, improvise, and overcome. Patriots say, do your job. Here in Milford, our Spartans say, we, not me. So let's get these kids back the education that they deserve. Let's get the teachers back to the roles where they want to be in the schools, for most of the ones that do, for the ones that don't. Let's safely and appropriately get them set up so they can still be effective contributors to our community. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to hearing your vote.
Thank you.
Tammy Daniels. I live at 23 Osgood, right next to the middle school.
How are you?
Oh, good. All I can say, come when school starts, it's hard to get out of my driveway. Just keep that in mind. I'm saying this for my cousin. He didn't want to come, so I came. Does Delax offer the same electives for the high school students as Milford does? And would remote learning for special needs students actually be the plan that was shown where they're actually physically going to school? That's the only thing. And if there is, when the school, if the school reopens, I'm 100, 100% for it. Because my daughter goes and drives me crazy. She's a 10th grader. She did miss a lot of days, but she, she's smart. She can come back. I know that. But I give the credit to the principal of the high school and to all the students, the students and staff. They did an excellent job, but you have to keep the teachers accountable, because there are some teachers that will not email. And that's all I'm going to say, but you guys did an excellent job.
Thank you. How are you, sir?
Good evening. I'm doing great. How are you?
Good.
I want to thank you very much for requesting the special council meeting and then authorizing it.
Just, just identify yourself.
My name is Michael Smith, 17 Helene Drive.
Yes, sir.
Again, I want to thank you very much for requesting this meeting and for the committee to go ahead and hold the second session. I think it was well-deserved. There's a lot of information going on. Like you said, we are dealing with unprecedented situations here. You also said during your, when you were campaigning, and I've only been here for two years, I've been looking up all kinds of information. The number one priority here for the school board are the students. Most important, they're the ones that can't vote. We as parents are the ones who vote with the taxpayers, but the kids are number one. When the school jumped into the remote learning during the springtime, that was unprecedented. The school did the best they could with everything that they had. I know you guys learned a lot. We learned a lot. There were some teachers that were there all the time. There were some that weren't. Overall, my two grandkids were able to do and keep things up, two reasons. Because my wife and I were there to work with them, to help them out, to help guide them. And now I know a lot of parents have to work. Fortunately, I'm old enough, I could retire, so I did, okay? So, but I told my wife, I was like, I haven't retired because we're working to help teach these kids. That's the job of the school board and the teachers. I want to be there to help them. I've been there throughout, when my two boys were growing up. And, which was a totally different situation, because when we moved here two years ago, my grandson's ninth-grade class in Southern California was well over 1,000 kids in his ninth-grade class only. Here, your whole high school is less, what, about 800? So the environment here is phenomenal. You made a comment, sir, earlier about the kids that talk to you, the politeness. That is one of the biggest things my wife and I noticed about the kids around here since we moved here. They'll wave to you, they'll thank you when they, you let them cross the road, they'll let you out of the parking lot. California, they just assume run you over, flip you off, okay? So my hats are off to the parents here and the parents that are listening, that the kids around here are great kids. And what the parents are doing to teach them shows. There were some things on Facebook that shouldn't have been, do not, do not disagree. Unfortunately, this is the kind of times we're in right now, where the people can hide behind Facebook, they can say what they want, and they don't care. But I want to thank you very much for this opportunity, for listening tonight. I know the superintendent and the team that they had worked very hard based upon the information that they got in the surveys of going to a hybrid or coming back to full time. And then things just kind of have, there are still unanswered questions. There's unanswered question for the hybrid, there's unanswered question if we go full-time, there's unanswered questions if we just go remote. But there's always going to be what-ifs. We all need to realize that we cannot answer every single what-if, because something else is going to come up. But I do thank you very much, and I greatly appreciate you, the consideration that you guys have given this thing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good, how are you? My name is Samantha Knowles, and I live at 31 Comstock Drive. I'm a senior at Milford High School. And I just want to say thank you for coming out and rethinking your decision, because I'm a very engaged student in, when it comes to school. And I participate a lot with student council, band, and prom committee. We started to do that. And then, yeah, it didn't end up happening, but it's rescheduled till November. But I just want to thank you, like, all the principals and everything, and all the school board. And I just have one question. How will grading go with high school? Because I know that it was a pass or fail system, so that really did not work well, I feel. Because I try very hard in my schooling, and there's other kids who don't, and they still pass, but I just don't, I don't know. I just, one of my questions.
Do you have that answer, or?
Ms. Davis can answer that question. So what we did at the high school is we did maintain grades. But if students had special circumstances that they felt warranted us taking a look, there were students who, we expunged their grades. We dropped the, dropped it off their transcript, so it wouldn't hurt them. Some students said, had these special circumstances, I would like a pass/fail. And so we spent time, a lot of time daily in May and June, looking at those individuals. The teachers really felt strongly that we should maintain a 0 to 100 grading system, because they wanted to keep the kids motivated. As we move into the fall, we want to work with our faculty again. When we were wrapping things up for the school year in June, we did a survey and we had a lot of discussions with the teachers, and they did feel that keeping that 1 to 100 scale really did keep kids engaged. They also felt that the structure of the school day was very important. So we're going to be returning with our task force to those recommendations from the faculty. And I think feedback from the students will be important as well. So I'm glad that you got up and spoke today, because I think that it's important to hear from students, too, how to best keep students motivated in this new world that we're going to be in.
Thank you, and thank you for meeting again.
You're back. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Erin Carter, 58 Hartshorn Mill Road. And also, I'd like to thank you all for all the time and dedication that you have all put in. It's obvious, there's a lot of thought put into all of this. I just had one question, though, and forgive me if this has been answered and I missed it. The metric, do we have a metric in place to be used to go from hybrid to full remote? If we need to, kind of what are we measuring with? If it's cases in the school, the district, the town, the state?
Great question.
It is a great question. We did discuss it in the plan. We said that we would, and this is a question that I, and Jason can come up and also speak to this. Him and I did have a discussion about this as we were creating sort of our green, yellow, orange, red document, and I had said to him, so tell me what the cutoff is, right? Because I wanted to put it right there in the plan. And I believe in our conversations, you know, he said that there's just so much data and different points that go into a decision like that. And so in the plan, we, we talk about the conferring that is going to happen, either on a case-by-case basis and/or depending on the data that's coming out of the state. So Jason, I don't know if you want to add anything to that, but, you know, the feeling from, you know, our health official was that it's too complex to put a cutoff number on, and there's too many data points to be able to say, like, this is what is going to close the entire district down. So we explain that in the health and safety part of the plan.
Okay, so it is going to be pretty fluid, just because there is so much to look at?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Ally. I just moved up to New Hampshire recently.
Welcome.
And I wanted to come up and say I think we should reopen schools completely, because there's, there's, for the students mostly, because there's a lot of, like, newer people, like me, coming down, coming up here. And I feel like it, since we're new and we don't know anybody, it would help a lot with our mental health to at least know one or two people, so we're not completely alone. And we have people to talk to, to help us with school stuff, especially if our friends are down in where we originally were. Yeah, okay.
Ally, right? Ally, welcome to our town, and I think everybody here would like to welcome you to our town, too. Very brave of you to come up, and thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Ally.
Okay, is that, has everybody had an opportunity? Anybody else? I don't want to leave anybody out. Okay, we'll end public comment. And go right to any additional board member comments, if you have any. Does anybody have any?
I just want to, Ms. Chairman, may I speak?
Yes, sir.
As a school board, after hearing all the input from here, we have to put the trust in the SAU office, along with our building administration and staff members, and hope and pray that they do their diligence to keep everyone safe and follow the outline of the plan, so that we can meet the needs of the community and these students, and make sure that we are meeting their expectations and keeping them safe. And that includes the staff. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I want to speak, well, briefly, from the heart. Excuse me. I received several emails from people who were glad that we went fully remote on Monday. And we've certainly heard from parents this evening, residents, who felt strongly that going to a hybrid model was not safe and that it was not the right decision for their family. And I feel it's not the right decision for my family, and I know that's really personal, but I'm going to be completely upfront about this. I don't think it's right for some of us, and some of us aren't going to feel safe, and we have the option of choosing to have our children instructed remotely. What I did realize when I read many of the emails and listening to folks is that while I would have the ability to make a choice for my family, many people were left without that choice. And I still feel strongly that the safest place for our children is at home. I truly feel that. But I can't make that decision for every parent. And I think when one is elected to serve on a board, that we have to be mindful of all of the people in our town, and that we have to be mindful of everyone's choices. And I think that's really important. I would, I would want people to respect my opinion and my choices for my family, and therefore I am respecting the opinions of others and the choices they make for their families. I think that when we look at the numbers, 20% is a whopping number. It's a, it's a pretty big slice. And so I think it's important that we keep in mind that people make choices for lots of different reasons, and that we have to respect each other's points of view. I did not go into the quagmire called Facebook for that very reason, because I don't think people are kind to each other, and I don't think they respect each other's opinions. I do want to say, however, that I am respecting other people's opinions. I don't feel that we need to quote-unquote cave to pressure to reconsider what we have decided. And I think that that's a really important thing, too. This is not necessarily a mark of feeling that we had to respond to a very vocal group. It was indeed responding to people who made reasonable arguments about why we should reconsider what we have decided on Monday. And I think that's the important part here, reasonable arguments, because that's what I was listening to. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to make a statement.
Yes, Mrs. Sopra.
When I woke up Tuesday morning, I was planning to go to the beach for the day, to spend the day with my daughter, who's leaving for college in a week. Before I could do so, I felt like I needed to explain the reason behind my decision of not being able at the time to support a hybrid model. I attempted to do so and immediately regretted that decision because of the sheer outrage of the public. I also reached out to the superintendent, because I wanted to express my desire to support a hybrid model. We had a lot of questions, and I'm very thankful that the board was able to come together and reconvene. I feel that we did have a lot of our questions answered. I also feel, as Ms. Zeno stated, that I went back to that question again and again as well. I have three children in the district. I'm not sure what option I would choose for them, but that's what it came down to, that there needs to be an option. I think that it's important to work together, and I'm putting my confidence in the administration that they are going to fight to ensure that every staff member that requests some type of accommodations will be granted that, and my hope is that, that we can come together as a cohesive community and support that. I want to state as well that this had nothing to do with the negative outcry. Our desire to revisit this decision was the first thing on my mind when I woke up Tuesday morning before I saw or posted anything. I think that, again, I've stated before, it's difficult to make decisions at 11:00 PM after a very emotionally grueling process. I think that the families that choose hybrid and the families that choose full remote do have to have that option of choice. And I think that I also agree that it's probably safer to not have the children in school. But again, I feel like as an elected constituent, that we can't take that option away from the students. Listening to the students tonight was really heartwarming, and I have to say, the last young lady, Ally, is she still here? Thank you very much because you really touched my heart with what you shared, and...
Well, you made a pretty big impact of only being here a short time.
What grade are you in, Ally? 10? Okay, welcome.
Play lacrosse?
He's going to recruit you.
Yes, sir. I got started recruiting for lacrosse.
So again, I just want to thank all the community members that were able to share their thoughts and that were able to let me know whether they did or did not support me. Decision-wise, that they still supported the board as a cohesive unit. And I hope that moving forward, when we have to make tough decisions again, please think twice before just lashing out and just, we need to work together. This is going to be a long road. No one knows where it's going to end. I hope and pray that we make the right decision tonight, and I hope and pray that we don't lose any community members. But again, I think that choice is important.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Carver. First off, you know, I, you know, I get blown away every time I listen to Ms. Zano here. Just knock it out of the park with what she says. And, and, you know, I want to congratulate Ms. Zano, the gentleman that stood up and said, "Our students, our community, and our kids in this community are such the nicest ones, and, and they are just out of the park." And I want to take a quick moment as I absorb that and thank Ms. Zano, who's given us a lot of years in this district as an administrator here in the high school, is part of the reason why we have kids like they are in this community who retired last year and has moved to another position on the board, which has been great. But I think with that said, I want to thank the superintendent for leading, you know, a excellent plan and the entire administration for the countless hours. I know I look in your eyes when I walk in and I see the exhaustion, but the drive behind the exhaustion to better our community, better our kids, get, get down to your expertise in education. And I truly believe you guys are going to knock it out of the park with all the thought, with all of our great teachers, with our community behind us. And I want to thank each and every board member for the passion they have as we come together for tonight. So, thank you.
Just before closing, again, I want to thank everybody for taking the time tonight, the administration. I, I think it was well worth the time, getting back and making sure we asked the right questions. It would have been real easy to say, "It is what it is," but that's not the way we do things. And that's not the way we should do things, okay? If we have extra questions, and one thing I've always, ask the board. If you ask, if you have a question, ask the question. And, you know, don't, you know, if you think you're going to make a mistake, you know, if you make a mistake, you know, ask for forgiveness, move forward. People are okay with that, and that's the way we should be. And I want to thank, again, you know, all the students out there, because like Mr. Smith, you know, you know, said to me even during my campaign, and a gentleman that called me also this afternoon reminded me, this is about the kids. It's not about the, you know, I, I'm very sympathetic, you know, for all the, you know, the family issues or inconveniences there may be. But again, this is about the children, you know, I'm going through the same things in my family, the same decisions I have to make. We have to make that, but we're not going to make it a bad decision or any decision without the thought it's about the kids at the end of the day. And this is not a decision that's, you know, made lightly, however the vote goes. You know, thank you again for coming out there. Thank you for everybody's passion and everybody that, you know, provided that passion to really think about it. Because as a board, it could have been really easy into saying, "It is what it is." But again, thank you for the bravery of the board to come out here and decide to come out here and field questions. I think this is a really great board, a very diverse board, that'll continue to work together in the future. And if you want to run next year, knock yourself out, you know, I really implore you, talk to the people. But we really need volunteers, okay, in our community. And it's very easy, you know, this, this community is about volunteers, the people are stepping up. And the only way we're going to get more volunteers to step up and to provide the support to this town and our children and be an example to this, for our children, is by treating, by treating everybody with level of respect. And I implore you, regardless of how the vote goes today, please, if you have a question, pick up the phone, give us a call. We're all approachable, but be respectful. That's all we can ask and lead by example. Your children deserve that because they see everything that you're writing. Okay? All right, let's go to a vote, and if someone would like to make a motion. Oh, it has. Great.
Long night.
And I seconded it, so, all right, so motion's on the floor to support... Yeah, I have it written down, but okay. Okay, okay. Model B, as said by the superintendent, is the one they support. Motion made by Mr. Carvel, seconded by Mr. Hannan. Any other discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Can I just ask a question? What are we voting in favor of to support Model B? Do we have to rescind the vote first, or?
We already rescinded.
We already did that. Yeah, that's how we got to all this, yeah. See, you made a mistake, too.
I make mistakes every day of my life.
I feel better now. Okay.
And I will ask.
All in favor with an "aye" and a raise of a hand?
Aye.
Passes five to zero. Welcome to hybrid.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Nope, you cannot. You don't get out that easy. We have a calendar to approve.
So, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, I think in my motion, I said to approve the district calendar with the plan.
Which, which one? There is two. The hybrid one, right?
I believe one is.
I just want to make sure it's clarified.
Yep.
Okay, so, and that motion was hybrid option one, right?
Yes.
So if anybody's keeping the score out there. And now, Ms. Tlava.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Ms. Slappa to adjourn, second.
Second.
By everybody?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.